Hello, everybody. I call to order this meeting, joint meeting of the Town Council and School Committee of South Kingstown. It is January 14th, 6:39 PM, I believe. First order of business is the Pledge to the Flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the capital improvement program for the fiscal year 2015, 2016 to 2020, 2021. And, take it away.
And the answer is no.
No.
Please begin.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us this evening where we come together to discuss the capital budget. I'd just like to make mention that Mr. Voorhebbin will be late. He's at a work commitment and Doctors Cotter and Mrs. Mosher are also at work commitments, but they are unable to attend this evening. We're going to try on the wireless mouse. So what I tried to do is to frame this presentation, letting you know what, how we're defining a capital project and then how it defines, is defined by the Rhode Island Department of Education. So when we talk about it, it's a non-recurring tangible fixed asset with a useful life that's longer than five years, but as you'll note, the bonded programs are certainly 20 years' expectation and in excess of a value of $10,000. And for our presentation, there are actually two areas of focus. One is the six-year bonded plan and the other is capital items that are located within the school department operating budget that are fondly known as the 5200 account or the pay-as-you-go account. And I'm not going to go through all of these slides, but I've given them, made them available for the websites and also for the audience and certainly council members and school committee members. But this gives you sort of our history since prior to 2009 of the bonded program. And we have, we had unscheduled years and then scheduled years and then this, and off year. So actually from the first time I've been here until now, this is the first bonded program that we've participated in, so since 2009. This is the Rhode Island Department of Education definition of the capital improvement plan and that will become relative shortly. And last year, when we started talking about capital improvements, we wanted to make mention to the community that there's a significant difference between capital improvements and general buildings and grounds improvements and routine upkeep of buildings and grounds. And so certainly during the unscheduled years and the off years, there were scheduled items for routine maintenance and upkeep. And then I went on last evening to explain to the school committee that capital projects examples would be like a roof, bleacher replacements, computers, large purchase projects. When school departments, when we go forward with our capital plan, we would like to receive housing aid from the General Assembly. And in order to do that, we have to go through a procedure as articulated by RIDE, the Rhode Island Department of Ed. And this gives folks a definition of school housing aid and the Rhode Island general laws that govern the housing aid. And our current reimbursement is 35 percent. In order to garner RIDE approval, we have to include a facilities analysis. So we actually participated in, with an RGB study and the school department employed the RGB firm to conduct a full facilities analysis on June 11th of 2013. And what that calls for is inspections, the analysis of the site architectural and structural plans, plumbing, HVAC, and they take a look at all of our floor plans and diagrams. And then we have to complete what's called the RIDE necessity for construction application. It's a several hundred-page application, which if you would like to take a look at it, it's, there's a link provided. And there are actually five, four different stages. You put in a letter of intent, RIDE issues preliminary approval, then the commissioner recommends the bonded projects to the Board of Regents, and then there's a final review and enabling legislation. So we've obviously received RIDE approval. This was the project timeline that was adhered to, just for your information. The study was complete in August of '13. School committee approved the capital plan in September of '13 and then revised by the manager. School committee reapproved in November of '13. We received RIDE stage one approval in December of that year. Town council approval of the capital plan on January 27th of '14. RIDE stage two approval and then enabling legislation to the General Assembly with much thanks to our legislators for that assistance on March 14th. And our work began on July 1st and then the bonds were approved by the voters of South Kingstown on November 4th. And this is, just captures what the bond stated. It was on Election Day, local question nine, school improvement bonds in the amount of $4 million. And we described for the community and for the voters that voter approval will, and actually did on question nine, allow the town to borrow $4 million. So the town in fiscal year 1516 plans to borrow a million that was previously authorized by voters in 2003, $2 million for fiscal year 1718, and an additional $2 million 1920 to address the school facility needs. And then how will the money be spent? And so the $4 million in conjunction with the previously approved $1 million authorized voters over the next five years to approve capital projects and receive RIDE reimbursement. And this is a detail of the 5.26 million. As you can see, 1.5 million of the projects are at the high school, roof replacement, interior renovations, fixtures, emergency lighting and masonry. At Curtis Corner, $247,000 for HVAC upgrades and $45,000 at Broad Rock for masonry repair. At Peastale, school roof replacement and HVAC repairs in the amount of $108,000. At West Kingston and Mattoonik, the projects are the same and very similarly priced to replace HVAC, electrical systems, roof replacement, exterior envelope upgrades to the tune of 1.4 million. And at Wakefield, roof replacement, HVAC upgrades, doors and hardware upgrades in the amount of $359,000.
Leave that page. I do want to mention that the study that's done really looks at what the needs are of the buildings. The costs are really general estimates. The cost estimates, particularly on the Mattoonik and West Kingston HVACs, is not documented. So we've got target numbers as far as that $5 million and we've got profiled numbers at this point, but those numbers really are not going to be valid until the needs assessment is done on the different types of uses, whether it be an oil heat replacement of electric, some type of a propane use in those buildings. So you're going to need to understand that a capital improvement program, as we've always talked about in the prior two sessions, is really a long-term planning document more than it is a financial document. The finances are here, but they're really based on numbers that John and I had been using for several years when we went forward to the state. I think it's also important to point out is that the Robinson, Green and Baretta report that was done on all school buildings showed potential improvements of up to about $11.5 million. What we did between the town administration and school administration is to review those items that were acceptable to the state as safety-related issues. That's where that 5.25 comes from. The original six-year plan was 6.3 million and we're one year into the program at this point. That's why it's down to that 5.2. But recognize that the numbers are placeholders at this point rather than target numbers for the different improvements. The numbers I'm the most concerned with is the HVAC at those two schools in the outlying years because there's no documentation on how that number would be achieved.
We also refer to it as a planning document and it is given annually to, whether they're bonded pieces or not, to the Rhode Island Department of Education as our asset protection plan. That's only a five-year indicator. Here in South Kingstown, we keep a six-year planning document. Some of our planned upgrades actually provide opportunities for energy efficiency savings through the replacement of aging electric heat systems at Mattoonik and West Kingston. And the improvements certainly will enhance the educational environment for our students and teachers. All projects expect to be completed by August 31st, 2019, and the useful life of the renovations is expected to be approximately 20 years. And this just details the accounting that was just described. Focus on the building committee included Robert Derosha, who is our Maintenance Director, Building Grounds, who's in the audience this evening, John Rashat, who's also in the audience this evening, who has now retired, and Mary Ann Crawford is replacing John, myself, Vin Murray, the Town Planner, Ray Somosher, who was appointed by the school committee, and principal representation on the building committee actually rotates depending upon which school the projects are based in that year. We also had two community members that expressed a lot of interest and were wonderfully helpful to us, Donna Doyle and Shelley Costerini, who are both parents in our community. The initial work in 2014, 15, and we refer to this slide as the funding share, the revenue came from school department undesignated fund balance and the expenditures were working on the high school stairwell renovation that was completed this summer, Peastale Elementary School roof replacement and Curtis Corner Middle School repair projects that will be done this year. Future work on South Road School Roof will actually come out of the South Road School Fund collected from revenues received on the previous lease. Within this six-year plan, we have no projects scheduled at Hazard or South Road or the Administration Office. And what I've tried to do for clarity, but I know it's difficult to see this slide, is in the dark gray is the previous year, the year we're in now. And in the mustard color, which doesn't show mustard at home, by the way, my home, it's the current year, the planned budget year, the year that we are, is the focus of discussion this evening. And then 2016, '17, out to 2021 are the out years. And certainly as Mr. Alfred alluded to, the farther you go out in your planning, the less reliable some of the numbers can be due to cost of materials and labor from now until then. So at the high school, you're looking at corridor renovation, $482,000, third floor renovation, $312,000, total projects. This planning year, $794,000 with a total over the six-year planned of 1.5 million. At Curtis Corner, there are no projects planned until the 1920 school year, which is $247,000 to replace unit ventilators, and that is the total over a six-year period. At Broad Rock, which as you know is our newest facility, we have exterior masonry repair of $25,000 in this planned budget year and $20,000 in the out years for a total of $45,000 over six years. At Mattoonik this year, life safety code improvements, sorry, foundation repair, drainage improvement totaling $121,000, and in the out years, roof replacement and the HVAC for a total of 1.4 million. At Peastale, there are no projects scheduled until 1920 school year with minimal HVAC repairs and a roof replacement for a total of $108,000. At Wakefield, there are no projects planned this year, but you'll see roof replacement and replace of the unit ventilators next budget year for a total over six years of And West Kingston, of course, very similar to Mattoonik, this year $90,000 for site drainage and life safety code improvements for a total of 1.4 million. Within non-bonding, you're seeing a repave of the Curtis Corner parking lot in West Kingston this year for a total of $555,000 over the course of the asset protection plan. And it's important to note that there's a moratorium through the Rhode Island General Assembly on school housing aid and school housing aid projects unless a school department is able to substantiate that the improvements that we are making are for health and safety and well-being of staff and students. And so the project team, certainly led by the efforts of the manager and Mr. Rashat, were able to successfully do that. So that was really, truly a victory. There are many school departments that have not been able to make any improvements.
Kristin, before you go past that non-bonding projects, I do want to reference, the reason those are non-bonding projects is they do not have a 20-year life. We're not going to borrow money for 20 years to pave a parking lot. So what we recommended last year when we put the six-year plan together was that unassigned fund balance within the school fund itself would be transferred into the construction funds so that those jobs could be done, both at Curtis Corner and at West Kingston. The 295 is as a non-bonding project solely because it would be paid for by the tuition income that had been generated with third-party use of South Road School. So that's why those projects are isolated. It's not that, what we wanted to look at is to make sure that anything we were looking at bonding money on had a life similar to what the repayment. Worst thing you can do is to use paving money and 10 years later still be paying another 10 years on that when you still need to repair that parking lot a second time. So that's why those projects are isolated outside of the bond, the bond program itself for the $5 million.
Kristin, can I just ask a question on the roofing? Is the reason why it was so expensive in Peastale to roof because it was a slate roof? Because it looks like Mattoonik and West Kingston are substantially lower at Peastale. Is Peastale a slate roof?
Well, part of it's a slate roof.
Please, Mr. Rashat, take the microphone.
Part of Peastale is a slate roof. And that had some repairs done on it, but the roof that was put on this year was a shingle roof. It was just the size of the roof, basically. And there were some deck repaired. It was done at the same time, the deck being the underlayment.
Thank you.
I think that's an important question to address, too, is that many of the roof repairs that you're seeing are for segments of the building. We're not talking about replacements of the entire roof on the high school. It's like with Peastale, we did the roof this past summer that houses the gymnasium. So it wasn't dealing with the tile roof at all on the front of the building.
And I'm just shuffling through the papers here. Peastale was $428,000 for roof repairs, at least that's what we put towards that this year. And the others are $324,000, so they're substantially less. But like you say, they're not the whole building.
... Section 3.
Really? On West Kingston and Mattoonik?
Yeah, yes, it is. So for the 5200 account, which again is the non-bonded account, it is what is being planned for now by the school committee in their general operating budget. But it is, it meets the definition to be utilized within the capital purchase program and with, because it has the expense and a shelf life that qualifies not as 20 years, but the first definition that I showed you. So to just give you a little bit of background, we have a district technology plan. It's pretty significant planning, thinking and working from a variety of stakeholders from all over the town. And that is a document that is required by the Rhode Island Department of Education to be submitted annually. We, our plan is so substantive that we have actually three different tiers of the plan. One is a financial work group that was led by Mr. Rashat, now is being led by Mrs. Crawford, and a hardware, software work group led by Doug Snow, our IT Director, also in the audience. And the third is the curriculum and development work group that would go into planning curriculum related to blended learning and technology, and then the professional development for the devices, for the software applications and for the different instructional techniques that would be required. And that's led by Pauline Lisi, who is our Assistant Superintendent and Curriculum Director, and Simone Palmer, who is our STEM Coordinator, and STEM is Science, Technology, Engineering and Math. I'm trying to be mindful of all of the acronyms in education, so I apologize if they're in there. We also, it's important to note that we participated fully in the Rhode Island Department of Education Wireless Initiative where we were given, if you will, monetary support in order to make certain that every school in the district is wireless and they all are now. In addition to that, we sought out this year, Pauline and I met with folks from the Highlander Institute and had our district participate in a process where we could enhance the technology development skills of some of our instructional leaders. And so five South Kingstown educators were supported by the district to apply to become what's called Fuse Fellows. And if they were selected as a Fuse Fellow, which was a highly competitive process. Step one was they had to make a YouTube video of themselves and why Highlander should select them. They had to do group interviews, they had to provide a lot of data and commit to a two or three-year process. And we were, we received in South Kingstown the highest number of Fuse Fellows that applied. And I received a call from the folks at Highlander congratulating us that we had such quality applicants. And of course, we know that about our wonderful educators, so we weren't surprised, but very excited. So Corey Lennon, who is a teacher in grade six at Broad Rock Middle School is a Fuse Fellow. Jared Vance, who is the Assistant Principal at Curtis Corner Middle School, was selected as a Fuse Fellow, and Rob Young, who is an Assistant Principal at the high school, was selected. In addition to this, we were also then selected as a district sort of on the move with technology. And as such, Highlander chose us and several other districts in Rhode Island to give us the help of Fuse Fellows. So we've received two folks, they certainly are not here full-time. They do this in addition to their regular teaching schedule, but they're coming to help with, for over a period of years, with the one-to-one technology initiative at the high school, and they are free of charge, their time and expertise. They've already met with the central office folks, that was their first planning route, and all of the district administrators to make certain that we all had the same, you know, focus and vision and idea in mind. And thankfully, due to our commitment to the technology plan, you know, that was not an issue. We decided together that the high school needed the most support, they were taking the greatest leap. One of our Fuse Fellows is from the city of Pawtucket and the other is from a teacher from the Rhode Island Nurses Middle College. And they provide professional development, technology expertise and support in blended learning, certainly mostly to staff, but it's also extending Curtis Corner at this time and then projected at the other schools to families as well. And Broad Rock, I believe, is doing so. These are the folks who represent and have represented the stakeholders in our typical capital planning committee, which would work for the 5200 account or the items within our operational budget. I've named everyone else who's in the audience, but Mr. Lynch is also in the audience and I hear he's added some slides to my presentation to advocate for a spiffy facility somewhere in town.
Nothing major.
I'm joking. So it's important to note that this page, while vitally important, it gets confusing that it's separate from the bonded. So for folks in the viewing audience, these are being planned within the budget that the school committee saw for the first time and the public saw last evening. The plan is largely technology, as it has been in the past several years, telecommunications program of $25,000 to replace the existing phone system at Broad Rock Middle School to make it an IP phone system. That has been the only school who has not had IP and for at least the six years that I've been here. Administrative computers, this is a replacement schedule, $15,000. This is not computers for administrators. This is usually for folks in the central office. It could be for guidance, teachers or administrators, but it's not student computers. And then computer equity replacement has typically been for our labs. We have a lab replacement schedule and you're going to see with the investment that we've made in technology that we are relying less on our labs in the future and their replacement. But certainly, we are still needing to keep some commitments to the refurbishment. We have 14 labs in the district. You know, when I started teaching, there was this question between, is it better to have a lab or is it better to have a couple in your classrooms? Certainly, you've seen classrooms, they can't have, you know, 25 computers in the classroom. And there's usually a split decision. Some teachers would say that their preference would be to have a few in the classroom. Others would say I'd rather have all so the children could maybe access them daily. And sometimes, teachers would like to take their entire class to the library or to a computer lab where they could engage in a whole-class instruction. And so what we've found is that we like to have both. So we tried to have computers, as you can see, like at Broad Rock and the elementary schools, a few in the classroom and then a lab. So at each of our elementary schools, we have one lab at Broad Rock and at Curtis Corner, we have two labs, and at the high schools, four labs. No, six labs, because I forgot the art and the CAD. So with the infusion of technology at Curtis Corner, there has been less of a need certainly to rely on those labs. So last year, there was a significant commitment made. Actually, two years ago, there was a plan made. And then last year, a significant monetary commitment on behalf of the school department to put laptop devices in every core area classroom at Curtis Corner. So every English classroom, math, science and social studies has access to a laptop cart. And then they already had some laptops there and they had the two labs. So now those devices have been able to be allocated for the use of a less number of faculty and students have been showing greater engagement. They've been showing greater application and technological skills. They're finding not writing down a draft and then typing it, just typing and drafting on the computer, you know, something that comes natural to them. And so this has been, you know, a very wonderful investment. That's a similar type of investment. We plan to be making it Broad Rock this year and continue to sort of share some of the repurposed computers and also infusion of some new computers. And then last year, we also invested in a pilot program of laptop devices and to be able to provide laptops for 19 teachers, four administrators and four full classroom sets. And those laptops will all be repurposed to go toward And those laptops will all be repurposed to go towards ninth and 10th grade teachers first, because we want to get the devices in the hands of the teachers so that they have time to really get comfortable, participate in a lot of professional development. They have been supported since the beginning of the summer with the new hire of a full-time district technology coach, who is a teacher at the high school, Michaela Cardinal. And she's been supporting all of the teachers and the administrators. And now she's actually moving on to branch out to the group that will be starting the Laptop Device Initiative in September. And we are filling in the extra computers that will be needed so that every ninth and 10th grade student in the fall will have a laptop, and the teachers that are teaching ninth and 10th grade classes. So that's where you see the $300,000 allocated to the one-to-one computer initiative. And it, it is our intent to have students walk into school with the, with the computers and have the meetings and delivery over August.
Kristin, did the ninth graders get them this year?
No.
Oh, so it didn't, because I thought we were starting just with ninth grade. So now we're doing them both, ninth and 10th?
Well, what we were doing, the pilot encompassed four teachers. And then each of the class sections that that teacher works with. So either four or five sections of teachers. The planning group, led, led by Mr. McCarthy, felt that it was very important that the teachers that came forward to the pilot were not just, you're a ninth grade teacher, so congratulations, you're, you're on the pilot, but folks who were really interested and eager to start this work. So he asked them to apply. And applications were, were given, and then interviews with Bob and Pauline Lisi and the computer support teacher. And then they, they ended up being teachers, sometimes of ninth grade students, and, and sometimes not just ninth grade students. So children were not given devices last year to take home with them. What we've learned-
Just teachers?
Teachers, yes, and department chair, and the four administrators at the high school, and also the technology coach. But the laptops were for children, but housed in the building.
Oh, so they just didn't get them yet. But I remember us talking last year, we were buying the computers for the ninth graders. I'm pretty certain that's how it went.
Well, that's, that's, the idea is to start the ninth and 10th grade one-to-one device. But what the confusion seemed to be, and we didn't really realize, other folks were confused until sort of months later, is that the big idea around a one-to-one device is not the student taking it home. All of the national leaders in this work, who have tried this on before, and certainly many other districts in Rhode Island have tried this on before, their advice to our planning team, and specifically to our technology director, is it's the teaching that changes so significantly, that that's where you have to pilot it, and you have to get feedback from the teachers. How overwhelming was this? In the classroom, were these devices distracting? Were kids trying to access blocked sites? Was it increasing engagement, or was it really a distractor? And then for teachers, this is a heavy lift. This is sometimes a change from textbook to digital curation of curriculum. And that takes an extraordinary amount of time. And, and a lot of flexibility and a lot of great classroom management skills. And so that's really what we needed to pilot. And we needed to make sure before we gave them all out to the, to the students, and they come back in and it's, you know, a disaster, that, that this is well-thought-out, well-planned, and that we've provided appropriate professional development and supports to teachers. And so that was our focus. And that was clear to us, but-
It was not clear when you came to us last year that that's what you were doing. You came forward and asked for computers for every ninth grade student. That, that's what we were told at last year's budget session, right?
I mean, I, I don't recall telling you that. We didn't make any shifts in our planning, but if that's, if that's what you understood, then I apologize, that was never the plan.
Well, I saw some heads shaking, so I think I wasn't the only one who understood that, so. But I mean, that's, that's what was presented last year, it was for ninth graders. I don't have a problem with it, it's just a change.
That's not my recollection of a change, but I appreciate the fact that, that I believe you. And I believe that that's, that's what you understood. So this year, ninth and 10th grade students would be actually receiving the device and going home, and their teachers, you know, approximately half of which have already been professionally developed, if that's safe to say. Because, you know, Mr. McCarthy right now is in the midst of identifying early, because typically you don't identify at this time, what, what sections will you be teaching? What sections will you be teaching? But we want to, you know, have department chairs get that early understanding so that we can provide that infusion of PD. The following year, every ninth grade student will get a device. So then nine, 10, 11 will have one. And then the following year, every ninth grade student will have a device so that nine, 10, 11, and 12 will have them. And then we will need to take a look at the, at how the devices have held up after the youngsters move, move off to college. And they could be repurposed for ninth grades the following year, some of them. Or they could be sent to Broad Rock or the elementary schools, where they would be perfectly delighted with a four-year-old laptop, it's a laptop. And so, but we're anticipating, worst-case scenario, an investment every year for the, for just the ninth graders.
Like this year, you're, you're doing $300,000 for ninth and 10th. So next year, would you anticipate that that would be half of that?
It's $200,000, because remember that, that the investment also includes teachers.
Oh, okay.
So we're only going to be having a fourth of the teachers that following year, and a whole cohort of students. So we're anticipating about $200,000.
For next year?
Correct.
Okay. But 300 for this year, because you're including teachers? I mean, that's what says on your one-to-one student to computer initiative. I'm just looking at your paper here, it says 300,000, unless I'm looking at the wrong spot.
300,000 is the correct figure. What I don't want to, I want to be clear about, is that we bought enough devices for the pilot, which, which are now being used in classrooms, as classroom lab carts, 25 each, and then for teachers and administrators and the support coach. So we take all of those, and then we're divvying them back up, and we're providing those to teachers and students. And then we're filling in so that, that the 300,000 represents the difference between the investment this year and making all ninth and 10th graders whole, and all of the teachers that support them and teach them whole. Okay? The interesting thing about this is that our real heavy lift in technology, although it feels like it's this year, it was last year. Because last year, it was a significant infusion into Curtis Corner. And those kids are now coming up to the high school, really technologically proficient. And so what we're finding at Curtis Corner is, in teaching this way through technology as a tool, they're using less paper, making worksheets less. There's less things to print, because when you're emailing them, you're emailing them sometimes in a Google Docs environment, and you're not printing. And so we're, it's lessening our, our expenses in copy machine repair and toner cartridges and paper, in other devices, and in textbooks. Because textbooks, as soon as they're printed, they're outdated, especially if they're Science and Social Studies textbooks. But with the, with eBooks that continue to refresh, or with using some textbook in addition to digital curriculum, we're finding that that's less of an expense.
Do you have an estimate on what those savings are, or is there data on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear- Do you have an estimate on what those savings are?
Textbook savings?
Textbooks alone to buy a complete, a complete series of textbooks are well over $100,000, if we were to replace a whole social studies or math textbook. What we've been doing in, in recent years, in the past four or five years, we haven't been purchasing any textbooks. The only textbooks we have been purchasing are those that replace those textbooks that are damaged, that are no longer usable for the students, or if there's a higher number of kids coming into the classroom, if there's a Spanish to classroom that is going to be larger than one, then they'll buy more textbooks. So there's a significant savings as we begin this transition. However, it will happen over a number of years. And also the fact that we haven't been purchasing a lot of these things in recent years.
And then on the other hand, I imagine that there's going to be some maintenance costs with IT stuff. Is there enough staff on hand, or do we go to a third party to fix the laptops?
I'm grinning, because I don't think you want to ask my technology director if he has enough staff, and see him laughing so, so sweetly in the, in the second row. It's, it's one of those things where if you ask the question, "Do you have enough staff?", the answer is no. So we have tried to be very, very creative going forward. We've sort of split off duties. Two years ago, we hired a data manager. That pulled some of the work from our district technology staff. Last year, in hiring a full-time teacher as a technology coach, and the STEM director has pulled the, the curriculum, the planning, and now the real significant PD support away from the technology department. This year, as a part of our collective bargaining agreement with the teachers, we just, we determined that there are some technology supports of hardware that, that can be done at the building level. And so we offered, and folks applied, for teachers to receive stipends. And they are like the first line of help for other teachers. We also found from feedback from teachers that they sometimes don't want to admit that they've made some sort of a, a problem on the computer. And so they will, they'll feel very comfortable with their, your colleague in the next room or down the hall. And so we, we have, we have worked through that. And they're working through a work ticket system the same way, but they're grabbing the work tickets that they can do. And we found that, you know, some of our regular education teachers have an unbelievable technology background. When we visited a site in Chicago, teachers found that they have a student help desk. And Mr. Snow has been really remarkable in utilizing our, some of our students over the summer in having them work. And they, you know, my teenagers certainly know a lot more about computers than I do. And they were extraordinarily helpful. So the next plan is to phase in some, like a student help desk. And that student help desk would support other students, and the student help desk could conceivably support teachers. But there are no technology additions to our budget that you'll see this year.
And what is the sort of planned obsolescence of these devices? How long are they estimated to last?
Doug, can you speak to the devices themselves?
Sure. Basically, we did a gentleman-
Can you come to the microphone, would you mind? Because the folks on the camera won't be able to hear the conversation, thank you.
I, I think we're very fortunate that with our support from our administration, we bought a device that'll, I designed it'll last probably about eight years with warranties and everything like that. I know you can go cheaper device, like a Chromebook and things like that, but the Dell laptops are robust, it's solid-state drive, keyboards are waterproof, Gorilla Glass. I saw that some students drop it from about six feet, pick them up, keep using them. Beakers are waterboard on them, but all in all, I think our-
We don't suggest that, students, by the way.
But our repairs right now, studying the 800 we have, are probably about maybe 1% coming back in day-to-day use. Any other?
Kristin, I have a question about the cost of the eBooks over the hard copy. I'm sure there is a cost for an eBook.
Right, it's not a hard copy. And so it really, it depends on, it depends on a lot of things. It depends on the publisher, it depends on how many the teacher or the department chair is requesting. And sometimes it depends on the number of seats. So I'll give you an example. We purchased into a software program for credit recovery. And at the, at the first blush, we purchased 10 seats, because we were sure that students were going to access this before school, during, periods during the day and after school. So we, we imagined it could be 100 students, as long as they're not accessing it exactly the same time. And so other than, do you have any estimated cost of a recent eBook?
No, we don't have anything as of yet.
We don't have any specifics, but I can research that and certainly send it along to you, if that would be helpful. The next, were there any other questions, or should I move on? I just have two more pieces, although I see a very different. Did you want to say something?
I wanted to clarify something. I mean, the question that Carol had asked, last year in the capital budget, the 14-15 year, there was no money that was specifically budgeted in the capital budget for the one-to-one. So you were correct, it came up during the adoption of the overall budget that that program was first, first talked of. At that point, there was $100,000 that the school committee put into their 2014-15 operating budget for the purchase of enough computers for 50% of the incoming ninth grade. Not the full. That program, then, what was anticipated at that point was that it was going to go to the students and go home. But the pilot program was, was delayed in terms of using it in the classrooms. Because that was what we asked for, for clarification. But I think the more important thing is that isn't, it's really a commitment as to where you're going over the next five years. Because as this program goes forward, you're seeing that in 2014, 15, 16, the request is to spend $300,000. That's to get the second half of the existing ninth grade, their units, and to get the incoming ninth grade for the 15, 16-year full units. So you would have half of your high school population with take-home units. If you look forward in 16, 17, and 17, 18 forward, you've got the $200,000 a year. That will be a reoccurring expense for computers. Because after the first senior class graduates that had computers, those units were to be turned over to elementaries. So you would always be purchasing enough new units for an incoming freshman class. But what you've got there is you can see that this program isn't a one-time deal. It's $1.3 million. This is page 103 or 104, I think it is, one of those two, in my Capital Improvement Program, which lists what the school department has, has presented. But I want to make it clear that when we look at a pay-as-you-go budget, as we did with all of the other funds that you've looked at, pay-as-you-go is important, not just to look at the first year of the pay-as-you-go, but rather the six years as to what the continuity and program requirements are going to be. So when we're looking at that $300,000, we've got to look at the next five years, really the next years going forward, at $200,000 a year to sustain that type of a program. I think the other question that came up at the time that this program came forward last April, in terms of discussions with the council, was, you know, the, how the curriculum was going to be integrated into the internet use. And I know that, as Kristin said, she's got committees working on the development of those programs. I think that may be one of the reasons you don't have the eBook cost, because I don't think we're there yet. But what we're doing, or I should say what the schools are proposing, is to initiate a new program, which is going to have long-term costs for the community. And they're still developing what the op procedures would be as to what the students' rights for use of the unit would be, as well as how the curriculum would be redeveloped to be able to make specific use of those, those units. So understand that this isn't just a one-time deal. Same thing that, I, I want to make sure that we're clear on when we go forward with all of the different programs with the schools. If we're going to initiate new programs, and those programs are reoccurring programs, you've got to look at what the implications are for the long term. Because the other program that we talked about was the immersion program last year. That's also going to be looked at in terms of what those costs would be. So I, I just wanted to try to get clarification as to where we were last year to where we are now. And I think Kristin's explained where she sees the program going in 15, 16. But I wanted to make sure you were aware of what long-term implications there are in terms of funding requirements.
So Steve, can I just ask, but in this is not the reoccurring expense of buying the eBooks, which I think Joe was bringing up?
No, there's, there's no cost in here for operations. There's no cost, if you're going to develop a curriculum where, instead of having hardcover books, you're going to be using things in the cloud, and as Kristin said, you're going to buy licenses for that purpose. for that purpose. Whether or not those costs are higher, lower, or the same as hardcover books, that's not something I've been presented with any information on.
Kristen, can I just ask one more question about this eBook?
Yep, I'm just going to write down what-
If you've got 50 kids, say 25 kids in a Weston Civ class, hypothetically, you know, I don't even know. And then, say for ninth grade, and then you have a second class of ninth graders in the same class, they can use that same program again, or you have to buy-
Sometimes, it depends on what you buy.
Fifty seats, but 25 seats.
It depends. There are so many different variations, Carol, that without like printing some and bringing them to you and showing you what the array of offerings are-
Yeah.
It's not just a one-size-fits-all concept.
Well, I mean, like in Algebra I class, you'll have like three of those, right?
But the, so, there could still be textbooks. And Algebra I is a good example. Algebra I concepts aren't going to change as much as, let's say, science, what's developing in science, social studies, which goes on every day, right? Continues to accrue. We have open source programs, open source books, open source curriculums that are being used by our teachers and throughout the nation that cost nothing. And so, they're funded by like the Gates Foundation, they're funded by national universities, Harvard certainly, MIT, and these are free. And so, what's happening to publishers that we knew of is that they are starting to panic and in some cases consolidate and change the way they do business. And so, some of them are transitioning to an eBook, an electronic book. And then, you know, one of the wonderful things is the kiddo doesn't suffer from chiropractic problems from lugging all the books home, they're able to just call it up. But sometimes it's seat time, and sometimes it's buying something that you're, say it again.
Device.
Oh, a device.
Device, or it's downloaded.
Oh, you download it, yeah. I thought you said you're buying a device. I'm like, oh my gosh.
Well, then the other issue is homework. I mean, so each student needs to have that program so they can go home and do their homework, right?
And, yes, yes or no.
Or have the book. That's why they always had to have a book. Each kid has to have their own book so they can go home and do their homework.
Yes, years ago, that's the case.
So, each one would need to have the program on their computer.
Access.
Or access, right?
Access is important.
So, that they can go home and do whatever homeworks require.
Correct. So, right now, I'll give you an example at Curtis Corner and in our math department, but it's happening in other places as well. But in our math department, last year Esther Eberle, who is our math department chair, started what we're calling flipping the curriculum. Comes out of a Harvard professor where they, the teacher videotapes themselves or directs students to a Khan Academy video or some other open source information where they would be receiving the content. So, some of our, you know, Mrs. Pierce, who's one of our math teachers, videotapes herself. One of our other math teachers might grab a Khan Academy video or an open source content that they found on YouTube or from a teacher in Westerly. And then she says to the students, "Your homework is..." And these are students we've not given a device, so they come up with their own access. And if they have no access, certainly, we can provide them with time in the classroom or in the library in order to do that access. And they watch the YouTube video at home or the Khan Academy of the teacher, and then they come in and they sit next to the teacher, and they actually work through all the problems. So, any folks who have children, and they're in mathematics especially, at least it was for my kids, they knew what was going on during class. Teacher did an excellent job. They got home, they're sitting at my table, and they're sobbing. They've missed a step, and it all falls apart. Or they make that one error over and over and over again for the time they are at home. Mrs. Brusso, as like a 30-plus-year veteran high school math teacher, I'm sure, has done a lot of catching up. So, now, what would happen, the idea behind this is, I know I'm doing it as teacher, I'm putting the video up, kids are learning it, they can stop, they can rewind, they can hear that over and over again. They don't have to sit there and take notes, they can just listen and understand. And then, when they get to try it out, to practice it, they have that expert teacher next to them, who can take small groups, who can just consult and pop in, who can do some mini lessons. And that's, that could be a completely technology-free, eBook-free environment. And we visited teachers two or three years ago, all across Rhode Island, Cumberland, Smithfield, Westerly, I don't know, Smithfield, Westerly, and Coventry, and Providence, who are doing this. And some have supportive some textbooks, some have support of an eBook at times, but most were using open source digital content. So, it's not really one answer. It really depends on the leadership of the department chair, what the preference of that particular teacher is in terms of accessing the content. But the department chairs clearly will be purchasing some eBooks, and we will be replenishing some textbooks. But before a new textbook program comes to us, we have those, I don't, but Mary Ann has those types of conversations with either the principal or the department chair, so that they, they're sure that textbooks is what they actually want to purchase. I don't know if that was helpful or more confusing.
No, no, it's very helpful. It's also new. So, are we really talking about the possibility of kids watching videos instead of actually reading? I mean, are we going that far?
It's, it wouldn't be solely watching videos, because another piece that they do, that would be for, instead of lecture.
That's kind of scary. That's kind of scary.
What you described would be kind of scary. So, what I'm saying is, when teachers are lecturing, I'm standing at the board and I'm giving a lesson, then the students are listening. That's a listening comprehension part, right? That would be similar to the video. Or, some of the teachers are going to lecture, and they're going to not do a flipped model. That's their, that's their own, again, their instructional preference. But instead of, think about it this way, if I had a textbook, and it was a social studies textbook, and it was written at a certain reading level, and I couldn't access that reading level, I was, it's an 11th grade textbook, I'm reading at a ninth grade level, then how helpful do you think my reading of this concept is going to be? So, now, the teacher has to go out without the technology and actually find a source, download it, print it, make copies, give it to the kiddo, and they have to remember to tuck it in the textbook. And it's pretty visible to all the other students that this young man or young lady has a different source that they're looking for. So, they either must be working higher or working, you know, struggling readers. Now, there can be a menu of offerings. I can pop on a link for you, teachers can pop on a link for students, they can float out articles. So, if the concept is, you know, the Civil War, then they can find high-interest, high-content, low-readability articles that the student can read that is the same content that's being delivered in that chapter of the textbook. But it's easier for the teachers to not have to. They can just Google it, find it, save it in their Google Drive, and it's there for them, and they can import it out to their students, rather than finding it, bringing it down, making copies of it, and then there's this piece of paper or several pieces of paper that the kids could lose.
Thank you.
All right. One last question on this area. Going back to Steve's chart, the page 104 here.
Yep.
I noticed that after the 2017-2018 fiscal year, you'd expect to have computers-
He moved it back. After the, which year, please?
The 2017-2018 fiscal year, you'd expect to have laptops for all the students in the high school is the plan, but the, you see, the $200,000 continues throughout the course. Are those for bringing it down to eighth, seventh, or is that-
No. So, what happens is, again, remember at the beginning, planning document. This is how we intend to plan going forward. So, if you see under the Student Computer Initiative one-to-one ratio, last year, zero here, because it wasn't in this program, $300,000 we're expecting to spend, and then $200,000, $200,000, $200,000 continually. That is to always refurbish the ninth grade. So, next year, ninth and 10th grade kiddos get the laptop. The following year, those kids become 10th and 11th grade kiddos, and ninth graders come up to the high school, and we hand them a laptop. And then, then they become 10th through 12, and every time an eighth grade cohort comes up to the high school, the intent is to give that cohort the laptops. Now, I think Doug said eight years is the life of the laptop. Is that what you just said?
Laptops, eight to 10 years.
Eight to 10 years. So, after, we've not done this before. So, the worst-case scenario is we would continue to buy brand-new laptops for the ninth grade kids every single year. We're going to buy laptops for somebody every single year, but, you know, in the out years, three years from now, we're going to have to take a look at how these laptops held up. They're certainly known to be, to hold up better than the Chromebooks. And the idea with the Chromebooks is that you give them back. My son has a Chromebook and has to give it back when he graduates, and then they're repurposing it to the ninth graders. We won't know with the shape that they're in, it's expected we could repurpose them. We're planning to just infuse, but as this goes along and we get to know these devices better, you might see these line item change. You're also going to start to see some shape-shifting in the labs, because now, particularly at Curtis Corner, we're learning that the access of the labs is different. What they're doing with the former laptops that were purchased in one department or two departments is different now that every core classroom teacher has a laptop card. So, that will also start to change. And then, what you're not going to see in this type of a slide is what we alluded to earlier, textbooks, supplies, copy machine refurbishment, materials, those are also going to start to change. Would we ever bring in eighth grade? I mean, certainly, our technology plan says access to technology K through 12 will be something we're shooting for over a period of time. But we haven't had formal discussions about any take-home of devices for eighth graders. I can't say we never will, but we haven't to date.
One more, Kristen. How many communities have, are doing the same thing with the technology, providing the laptops for the high school students?
So, I'm going to, I'm going to turn to my page and find that while I also say that, you know, my last two pieces were that we have $50,000 for the wireless lap, I'm sorry, the LAN and the WAN, the local and the wide area network, which is servers, routers, switches, and fiber optic cable, and then $35,000 for vehicle replacement, which you see is an every other year always expense. And that, we take the oldest truck in the fleet, and we replace it with a new pickup and a plow. Our data that was gathered now a couple of months ago said that we had 14 districts that are already utilizing one-to-one technology in Rhode Island, that four additional districts opted to do the bring-your-own device instead of the one-to-one technology. So, for a total of 18 districts that are already using devices every day with kids, and five had not responded, and nine had no concrete plans to share with us at this time. And that concludes my presentation.
Well, are there any questions from the council? All right. I think we all asked them as we went along. Would that, I'd like to open up to the public for questions and comments. Please come up to the podium, speak your name into the microphone.
Hello, my name's Alicia Collins, as you guys know, I guess, by now. I'm the mother of a student at Curtis Corner Middle School. I just have some concerns about the new programming that I wanted to share. Statistics show that one in five students struggles with a language-based learning disability. So, I'm wondering if the, does South Kingstown School District plan on hiring bilingual speech pathologists for the language program? I'm also wondering if we have a plan to hire a bilingual special education teacher to add support throughout this project. So, I'm just wondering if the dual-language immersion will be available to all students or not, because certainly, certainly should be, especially if it's aimed at closing proficiency gaps between general education students and special education students. I would hope that it would be accessible. And as it was clarified last night, there are going to be 3.6 full-time teaching positions cut over this budget cycle. Two teaching assistant positions are going to be cut, and planning and professional development time at the high school, one period is going to be eliminated, so now they'll be teaching for six periods per day without any time to plan. And these positions are eliminated, I think, for, to make room for things like the dual-language immersion program and the one-to-one device. There's really no dead wood in our district to cut from. We're at a point where essential positions are being eliminated under the guise of less student need. For example, at Curtis Corner Middle School, there are 527 students, and for the last few decades, two professional school counselors have divided the student body in half, each counselor meeting the need of 260 or so kids. And the only districts in the country, really, that are cutting essential support staff like professional school counselors at this point, have already cut after-school curricular or extracurricular activities, and they're in such desperate budgetary times that they have no choice. So, I'm just wondering if that's where we're at. I'm just confused by the added programs. Since sharing my concerns at the last budget hearing, former and current employees have reached out to me saying that the administrator in their building didn't decide to let them go, but that it was a decision made by a top-level administrator. And this administrator's detached from the real needs of the students and is just kind of making an arbitrary budgetary decision. The professionals I've talked to were completely spread thin in their positions, and then out of nowhere, boom, their positions were eliminated in the name of declining enrollment and less student need. So, anyway, at Curtis Corner, where there, shoot, you know, I really got off track. But anyway, there were 12 less students at Curtis Corner this year, and they let one of the student assistance counselors go. And her caseload was 260, and it didn't decline by that much, only 12. And an employee in the South Kingstown School District sent me a quote that's being circulated by the school staff in SK right now. And from what I've heard, employees feel like they're fair, any employee is fair game for the cuts regardless of their quality as educators and regardless of how important their position is to student success. This quote speaks to how school staff feel about the haphazard cuts to staffing in the district and the oppression they feel or they're facing when it comes to speaking out about these cuts. The author of this quote is Martin Niemoller. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then, they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then, they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then, they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. South Kingstown has high-quality and highly-qualified teachers. Before spending money on additional programs, I really ask you to take a look and take an inventory of existing programs, talk to teachers, talk to teacher assistants, former employees, current employees, ask them what the school climate is like, and let's just be sure that we're supporting our students and teachers before we're going out on a limb into other languages or, you know, adding a lot of computer programming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Jim O'Neill, Matunik. I think what is proposed before you is a great capital improvement program. Obviously, long ago, I've been part of it, and it's smart and frankly, a tribute to spending money wisely. I think we're very fortunate with some difficult times that we have coming before us the next few years. This program does what it's supposed to do. It protects our assets of the community, and it provides for the future growth of our schools as well as for our citizens in South Kingstown. We're also very important, very fortunate. We either have the tightest, finest, best, but we have an incredible balance sheet that we can work off of, thanks to all the departments, especially Steve Alfred and his staff. And Steve has mentioned before, that's what has given us the flexibility to think about the futures, such as the voter-approved gymnasium, which was approved at the last election. And it gives some flexibility, I think, of what school committee is going to have to come up with, a new combination of schools that are kept open- come up with, a new combination of schools that are kept open and classrooms. Just doing the math, which is, I'm referring to everything here in the capital budget. If you look at the school populations, we've dropped from a high of 4383 at the time Broadrock opened. And if you, there was no pre-K in that number, and if you take the pre-K out of the 3,302 kids, we're down to 3,200. We basically have lost 1,200 students since Broadrock opened. That's the equivalent of seated capacity of Curtis Corner, as well as Wakefield and South Road, if I remember the math correctly. South Road currently is basically used, about half the school's being used by the school department. I'm suggesting to you that this is going to be a very difficult sell to the taxpayers to ask for more money when we really need to batten down the hatches. And it may come to a conversation that we have to spend a few million dollars to add on to Broadrock, or maybe Curtis Corner. With the forecast of the student population declines, and the NESDEC people have been awfully close, really, basically, on the money since they were hired many, many years ago. They have us dropping below 3,000 students in 1919 and, excuse me, 2019 and 2020. That's, that's really incredible. So you've got to do this now. The taxpayers certainly need your help. And you can find all this, all this information, page 75, 76, in the capital budget document. And I can also echo what Dr. Anthony Mega said last spring. He said, "We are overfacilitated." He wanted to see more money going to programs and students. And I don't know what the amount of savings can be by closing a Curtis Corner. I leave that up to you. I certainly remember what Dr. Hicks said back in 2009. I remember the editorials, and maybe there are some savings there, and maybe those can go to programs. But I think you have to show the taxpayers that you can manage the facilities, which is incredibly important. Just a couple of other things here. The, what I think a lot of the population does not realize here, I just look back at my old figures, in 2008, 2009, State of Rhode Island gave our school department approximately $10.5 million. And this year, I think we're looking at about $7.5 million. $3 million, and I think basically, the last five or six years, the school department, I think you've in total maybe asked for an increase of less than that, less than that $3 million. And so we have to start figuring this all out. And what the population does not understand, you know, why is the State of Rhode Island taking $350,000 this year, this education funding formula? And I'm not sure of how they came up with their equation years ago. I know we fought that the transportation part of it, the charter school part of it was not correct. But the ride had us as a very expensive PPE, per pupil expenditures, had us as a wealthy community, and therefore, we were an easy one to take funds away from. But it wound up as being a two-edged sword. $350,000 loss this year, there's almost a $30 million gain in the statewide education budget last year. We got none of that. If you just took a pro-rate, let's say we have 2.5% of the students in the State of Rhode Island, that's 750,000. They take away 350,000, that's a million one. I think if our taxpayers knew this, they're going to rebel. I mean, I'd love to go up there, join you in boycotts. We need the rest of those districts, the six or seven that lost money. We need the regional districts. We need the outside of the urban core, but we, we really are getting the shaft. How can you tell our taxpayers you want 1% or 2% more in your budget, and we're watching the State of Rhode Island basically steal a million one from our taxpayers? That's our taxpayer money, just our pro-rate share of our population that's withheld and taken from us. So we take the easy route out by asking our property taxpayers for more money? That is absolutely not fair. So, anyway, it's, it's a lesson that I think a lot of our population needs to learn. So that's my kind of statement. I did have a question for Kristen, or anyone that could answer it for me, and let's see if I can find it. Back on newspapers, February 27, 2013, we might have held the first, held our first budget meeting then. But the town council then put forth a resolution to the school committee, and I'm just going to read this, because I don't know what happened to the money. In quotes, "We're in support of all the resolutions presented by the South Kingstown School Committee," said Carol McIntyre, council vice president. "We agree with them that they should receive the $605,150 as part of the technology funds from the Rhode Island Department of Education. The General Assembly reportedly promised the school department technology funding in last year's budget. However, the Rhode Island Department of Ed has reportedly been hesitant to distribute these funds, etc., etc." So Kristen, my question to you, did we get all of that, some of that? Is that part of the wiring of schools? What did happen?
It was the wire, it was the wireless initiative.
Okay, so we did get all that money, or a piece of it, or?
We did, I think we got largely, most of that money. I wouldn't say exactly.
All right, good, 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 because I, I know they promised all the districts would be, that would be taken care of. And then just a couple of other comments on the population draft here, because I know there's been lots of discussion about, you know, should be do, open up South Road, which a lot of parents would like to have back. Parents in this community love their neighborhood schools. They want all five open. Frankly, they want K through 5, if not K through 6. And I think what your job is going to be with this population drop is figuring out where the sixth grade should go. Do we put a sixth grade at South Road? You know, I, I certainly don't know. Seven to eight at Broadrock. I think the cost would be very small of the housing bonds that were issued over the years, maybe a few thousand dollars, but I think that would be quite small. And the certifica, certification is very important if the sixth grade is moved back to elementary schools. However, if they were in their own school, that issuance would probably not be a problem. I think the neigh, really, the neighbors that I speak to really want, want their kids back through the fifth grade at minimum. And if you just kept the sixth graders out on their own, obviously, you need a curriculum that will be rigorous and appropriate, to quote many of you. And then to quote one of our members here, is "I hope that with these changes, we can go back to focusing on programs and excellence in education rather than reacting to budget fires year after year." Wouldn't it be nice to say, "South Kingstown schools are pleased to announce we'll now be offering Spanish in the seventh and eighth grade"? Here's hoping, and that's a quote from your current chair, Raisa Mosher, back in March 16, 2010. We're now 275 kids fewer. We need to address this, because I think the population of this town and the property taxpayers would appreciate seeing that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public this evening?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Osborne. I'm sitting here listening to the budget this evening and listening to the school committee's proposals. I've read the report, report, but I believe that was in the Narragansett Times a couple weeks ago, and was really saddened to see the report card that our town has taken. I think we have a lot of work to do with the school committee to bring up some of our children to par, especially the reading program. I know for generations, I've had four generations of my family go to school here. And I can tell you, it still goes on today, that there's a huge problem with reading in our school system. I don't know what the lack of the peace that our school system needs to look at to bring these children up to their reading level, which to me is one of the most important things, that these children can exit our town when they grow from college, to get into college or into the workplace, to get out of 12th grade. If we cannot have our children reading to their level, it's really sad, and it's got to improve. It can't keep going on, generations after generations after generations. So I do know and do feel that technology is involving in our world. It's driving us all in our homes or our workplaces. It's all around us, we can't escape it. But if we don't get some of our basics down and help these students, that I can see some of these children having some of these laptops at home, it's going to be a real challenge for some of them. And I'll tell you why. Look at the population of our town, and look at the number of lower-income families we have in our town. We're not the biggest wealthiest town. We, we have a lot of families here who need help. And if we're bringing these laptops at home, first of all, there's a lot of those families that do not have the capabilities of helping their student. Second of all, they, we have technology problems. What's the backup system in place that we're going to have to help these children with their homework, so that they go back to school the next day? And there is technol, technology clinches all the time. If you go home tonight and get on your computer, you, every one of us have come across that. And the, and the stress and the demand on these children are going to be horrific if they can't get their homework done and get in trouble the next day. So if we do proceed with this program with the technology going forward, I think we really need to look at this very carefully, take our time, and bring some of our other levels of our education up to par where it belongs before spending a lot of extra money in places that is needed drastically. I understand also at the high school, there's a new math program. I'm hearing a lot, a lot of, not from my grandchildren, I have four grandchildren that go to school here, ninth grade, eighth grade, first grade, and fourth grade, a third grade. I go into the classroom sometimes to help some of the teachers, and I see the stress on these young children at, at elementary school. And I think the last thing we need to do is put more stress on these children that they're dealing with this technology that's changing so fast, that we just need to be very careful how we approach this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from the council? Oh, sorry.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I just wanted to say that I have a second grader, and I think that the reading program is phenomenal. He's been reading since kindergarten, and I go into the class to volunteer and watch them read, and I think it's pretty phenomenal. And I think that the budget slides that were presented at the last meeting had some really amazing statistics on the results of all the testing, the standardized testing, and I thought that it showed that our schools are doing really awesome. So I don't know if we want to share those again. And in terms of technology, I think that we have to just think about, you know, where our kids are going to be once they get to college. I mean, everything is done on a laptop or on an iPad, so we really, you know, in order to prepare them, we need to make sure that they can make that transition when they get to, to college, so.
May we have your?
Oh, sorry, Alicia Manis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, comments from the council?
I'd just like to address, Mr. O'Neill's come up here twice talking about the redistricting and the potential closing of a school. I do know and appreciate the panic that puts into everyone that has experienced that in our community, and also that that wouldn't be something that would happen anytime soon. That would be a very long process, I certainly am aware of that. I think, you know, we really all need to just look at the declining numbers, and especially the kids that aren't choosing to go to our school that are in this community. Why aren't they? I, I do appreciate, you can't ask them, but I'm, you know, if we could offer them an exit survey, that might be a good idea. I think we need to, and it's probably what you're trying to do, is attract them with these new programs. I'm just thinking that if that doesn't work out, and if doesn't attract the people like you hope it will, is there a backup plan? Because if there's not, unfortunately, in our future, that, that might have to happen. And I don't think any one of us want to see that happen, but if, if the numbers continue to decline and the new programs don't attract like you hope they will, I think there is some merit to putting a lot of focus on the basics and, and bringing the basics back to our community. Having happy teachers that feel comfortable, having a support staff for these teachers. All the new programs sound great and would be great in a utopian society, but we really need to look at the basics, look at what we can offer with what we have, and give support to the, the staff and programs that we have as well. And if these new programs maybe will, as you, I'm sure, hope, attract a population to the schools, that would be great. But if it doesn't, then, then where are we going to be at?
Thank you, Rachel. I know, we all know that there is declining enrollment. It's, it's no secret. We've, we've discussed it, we've talked about it. But one of the things that I would like to see is, I, I don't want to have to say that we're going to need to close any schools. I, I don't want to say that we need to close a neighborhood school, because people are extremely passionate about that. I do have to agree with, with that statement. But I'm a numbers person, I'm a dollars-and-cents person, sorry, I have a financial background. I have not seen, nor do I know, the percentage of utilization at each and every one of our schools versus classrooms that are fully occupied, classes that are unoccupied. And that, to me, is important to gain a sense of how we're going to attribute dollars to our budget. I, I really want to see, or I'm hoping that I can be provided a sense, provided a sense of the capacity at each school. Are there classrooms that are not being utilized whatsoever? Are there some schools that don't utilize a percentage of their buildings? To me, that, I need to take that into consideration, and that's important to me, because to me, it's, I'm not going to say it's all about the bottom line, but I don't even know what the bottom line is, because it hasn't been discussed. So I, I need that, I need that fruit.
I don't want to interrupt you, Meg, but when I understood Rachel's comments to be futuristic, not in the next month.
I'm not saying the next month.
When you're saying this, what, what, because we had a facilities usage study that we could provide you that was sort of archival now, but when, when are you, when is, are you thinking of something like this?
I'm not saying anything that's going to be done today or tomorrow, probably even within the next three years.
Today's almost over.
Within the next three or four years.
Okay, within the next three or four years. That's what I was just trying to get a sense of.
I just need a guideline, because we haven't gotten that. So I, I don't even know what school utilization is right now. So as a council trying to make decisions based upon the future of the budgets, it's extremely important to know where the projections are in the future of where the student population will be versus utilization and capacity of buildings. I, it's, it's extremely difficult for me to make a decision on a budget based on things I don't, that have never been provided. So I, I would like that information, that would be very, very essential to me, and I would, I would appreciate that. Thank you. And no, and I'm not asking for what you've done today or tomorrow, but those kind of things, it, those are, there are backdrop to the decisions that we have to make here at the table.
Certainly. And we, we received yesterday morning the memo request from the council to really highlight important details and specifics in four core areas that you were, have brought up briefly. So that, those are the, the half-filled blue binders that we started working on today to give you something, because we didn't have a sense of, of what timeframe you were thinking, although it did say the budget process. And, and so there, we, we already have some information that may be of help to you, so we thought we might as well put it, that was a discussion of the school committee last evening, that certainly, for some of you, Meg was not on the town council when we went through our last utilization study. And, and that was very detailed. It was probably, I have it with me, it's probably about 200 pages long. It's, and it showed specifically how many rooms, what should they be used for, what are they being used for, and in order to determine that capacity. So that's very appreciated. We, within your, the binder that I gave you, is just about all of the materials that we could gather that were informing the teacher-level we could gather that were informing the teacher level, building level, district level discussion regarding dual language immersion. And if, I certainly don't have to walk you through it, but what, what, well, maybe I'll just start, would you, would I be permitted to start there without feeling all right with you, or do you want me to just show you briefly what's in there and, and then you can ask us for more information going forward, or?
Sure.
Okay. So we provided you with a project brief that was actually provided to the school committee in, in December 16th, on December 16th. Last evening, the school committee stated that the PowerPoint presentation that we provided for you with regard to dual language immersion, it, it really encompasses the timeline, the very specific nature of the program, lots of scholarly research articles, peer reviewed, and by, and, and were provided by the University of Rhode Island representative, what the timeline of our scope of work has been. But the school committee pointed out, you should have a balanced view. The conversation at their table has been for quite a while. We've had a, a brief community conversation about the dual language immersion and the grade eight world language that is now in Curtis Corner in the spring. And then in the fall, we had another community conversation. So what, if there are challenges to this program, what are they? So today, we took a, a quick literature review and, and those are the three pages that you have in here, challenges faced by language immersion programs. Now certainly, are the good and extensive review, are the challenges an extensive review? It's not, it's not like a dissertation, but it's a pretty good literature review, to be honest, of some of the things that we know are going forward and that the district planning team comprised of teachers, administrators, folks from URI are, are working through. We also gave you, because we thought it might be helpful, a, a document that, it looks like a matrix. And this actually was all of the community comments that came from parents and community members that attended the conversation. And then the assistant superintendent organized them and then this has been a working document for the dual language committee. So maybe it answers some of the detailed questions that we, that we have not provided to you. And then we developed an FAQ to give to parents of entering kindergarten students. Those have been the folks that have been the most receptive, I would say, in terms of their feedback. And, and then folks pointed out last night that it's one thing to click on a link, but if we could give you a hard copy of some of the research, that may be easier for anyone. So we did that as well. So that's, that's pretty complete from our perspective unless there's, you know, you read it and there's detail that you just feel you, you don't have in front of you, let us know. The part about the one-to-one project brief, I think we've gone through in great detail, but there is a project brief that, that lets you know the program objectives, the background, the research, the early adopters that applied, and the, the elements of blended learning. We already talked about the number of districts that have already had one-to-one, one-to-one devices and most of them went nine through 12, like one, one piece. And we could have proposed that last year or the year previous. There were folks who certainly wanted to propose that, but, but, but we agree with you, this, and, and the comments that were made by one of the speakers, this is a process that needs to be thoughtful and well-planned and so that we're, we're making sure that students are using the technology in the best interest of their education. In terms of the school resource officer, there's a brief and we know that there are school res- I think one of the misnomers that I keep hearing is that this is a Curtis Corner resource officer. What we're proposing is not a Curtis Corner resource officer, it's a pre-K to eight school resource officer. And if that has been unclear, then I, I apologize for that because the high school school resource officer is largely supporting, if not entirely supporting, the high school. And there have been many occasions where parents have contacted our office, come to school committee meetings, and, and staff had, have been nervous about occurrences that are happening outside and inside of the district and/or school. And so a brief is here regarding the school resource officer. I know that a question came up about roles because it's hard to imagine, so you have a dean of students now, what will the school resource officer do that the dean of students now doesn't have to do? They're completely different positions. The dean of students again is a, a teaching position. And so we sent out on the 22nd after our meeting where it was clear that there needed to be some understanding of the roles, grabbed information from the actual job descriptions of these folks and also on the school resource officer from the national database, which, you know, we, we have worked on and shared with the police department, of course. It is a crisis prevention, restorative, justice, preventative, not punitive sort of model. And that information is in here for you. And then the fourth item was the reconfiguration concept and that is, you know, something that is not unfamiliar to most of us, unfortunately. We, um, we, I, I put together, and this, this has been my literature review for the last 24 hours. And it's, it's just to be able to sort of take a summary of what this sort of process entails. And when we investigated it the last time, not, certainly not the first time, because I, I understand that South Road came before me and, and that the reconfiguration of the middle schools came before me. And, but the conversation that, that I was a part of happened outside of the budget process and it really was at that 2009, 2010 mark. It was like, welcome to South Kingstown, Kristen Stringfellow, and here you go. We used to, you know, years ago, be able to generate quite a bit of funding from the, the state of Rhode Island. And now they were walking into having us be one of the most dramatic losers in the funding formula. And I know people tire of that, hearing about that, but it's true. And we are one of, I think it was four communities on the, on the slides last night, who is still losing. There are regional districts certainly who are losing their regional bonus, but that was an inflation over what typical districts get. The rest of the communities in the state who are struggling, who are cutting, who are laying off and, and having draconian relations with their, their, their teachers and, and support staff are getting more money. That's, that's what really puzzles me. And then when we do a review of what the town was able to afford, I'm going to go pre-Kristen, it's startling to me. I mean, it's such a change. 2006, the property tax transfer from the schools, 8.23 percent. And then 2007, 6.4. And I am not insinuating that the community could afford anything even close to that, but 2008, 5.25, 2009, 5 percent. And then my first year, funding formula first year, the, the, the economy dropped as well and the motor vehicle tax came in as well. And so the conversations between the town council and school committee were certainly everything that the, the folks that stood up and spoke at the microphone talked about, trying to be as respectful to the community and the taxpayer, trying to preserve the core educational program while also not just stopping and saying that 2009 education is fine, we're just going to stay right there, which I know no one would think would be okay. Then since that time, there's only been one year in six years where it's been above 1 percent. And we acknowledge, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to speak, I'm speaking for me, that that's difficult. No one wants to impose a tax increase. We can't ask the state for more money. There is no more, no, there is no venue for that. And the cuts to programs and staff have been incredibly difficult for our staff, for our students, for our, our teachers, for our parents. And the conversation that has, you know, I teach school finance at Providence College and the idea is either you, you get more money in terms of revenue and we're not a revenue, we can't drive revenue, we can't solicit revenue, that's not the type of an agency the school department is. Or you reduce programs for students, as, as Mrs. Collins talked about. That could be sports or music or, and, and that's not what the school community, the school committee elected to do over that time. Or you, or you reconfigure schools, which was done at South Road, which Bob Hicks again reconfigured the middle schools that we have, I've read through minutes and minutes of school committee meetings where folks were coming up and saying, you close an elementary school, close Curtis Corner, close Broad Rock, long before I met you. And then what happened, I think, is that perfect storm of, you know, we proposed a budget and the funding formula hit, the governor's, what is the governor's supplemental budget came out? That was a pleasant surprise, right in the middle of the year, we already think we have a budget and he says, stop your spending, you know, freeze your accounts, we, we need to take more from you. So we know, and I'll have a better review for you later, that prior to 2008, Bob Hicks and the then-school committee was talking about closing and/or reconfiguring a school. And then in May of 2009, there was a vote to reconfigure the high, the middle schools into Broad Rock and Curtis Corner, as you know, both had sixth, seventh, and eighth, but for folks who are new to the community, all the seventh and eighth grade students were moved to Curtis Corner and the sixth grade at Broad Rock. And at that time, there were questions about, okay, so where are the grade five students going to be? And when you toured the schools and you looked at, as the school committee did, their room occupant, occupancy use was extremely tight in the four elementary schools. So what had happened prior to my arrival is that Bob Hicks determined that there should be a facilities use study. And NESDEC came in to do, I think, exactly what Mrs. Healy is referring to. Take a look at the entire district, figure out what the student programs are of 2015, what the ride requirements are, which have also gone up, which has led to stress of our teachers, and the change in curriculum, the very dramatic change in curriculum that our teachers have been working through. It took from May, July of 9th, when a proposal went out on that facility study, then, then it went out to bid until September, to even get an initial scope of work from a vendor. And then they presented their initial findings November of that same year, but it wasn't until March 19th of 2010 that a final report was given by the facilities use experts. So that process took almost a year, just that process. The, the other items that I, I think are difficult is that when you close a school, the biggest savings is in staff reductions. And we've heard for, for several years that that is, is not making our school department stronger, and it's not. But that's what the biggest savings is automatically, and that's what it showed in, in our 27 to 29 reconfiguration advisory council meetings where community members explored all the different options at that time. And so you automatically would lose, if it were a middle school, two administrators, and this is of course not, this is off, off the top of my head, two administrators, one would need to go to Peastale because now that school would be as large as it once was. You'd lose core staff, like a school nurse teacher, the librarian, you'd, the central office staff, which would be the secretarial staff, the custodians. You'd lose classroom teachers and then you'd lose itinerant teachers. And, and, and that's regrettable because that, that, you're typically sometimes breaking even on transportation. What we learned is that you don't often gain a, an efficiency in transportation because now you're bussing over a larger landmass to fewer points. Depending upon the school and where the children live at the time, that transportation study is significantly different. So I'm certain that no one in this room thinks that any of the plans that we explored five years ago could be used today. And the reason is those kiddos are, were in elementary school and now in middle school, or in middle school and now have graduated. And so the neighborhoods have turned over. And maybe your neighborhood had very young children and your neighborhood didn't have any children and that's all changed. I think it took at least two months or more for, for the transportation vendors to figure out from the town planning department where the kids lived, how old they were, and where they'd be transported to. And we also look at housing aid and the housing aid on every single building is different. And even when we asked a year or two after Bob Hicks had asked, the numbers were dramatically different. And so they have to be recalculated by then-Alan Lord, but I would presume by Mrs. Sunderland. And that took several months of, of combing through that data to make sure that it, make sure that it was correct. And then redistricting considerations. And so that certainly elicits conversations with teachers and parents and families and, and so I, I, I hear what you're saying in terms of everything that you said this evening, but we wanted to make sure that, given your request, that we were providing you with a framework. So the school committee asked me to detail some of the big ideas that would be involved in the study. I'm sure many of you remember or are aware of them, but for some of you, it might be new.
Kristen, just, just to hit on that same topic, as far as the reconfiguration, I think that the last time around, we were looking at every single school, we were looking at neighborhood schools. I think what Meg is suggesting, I think Jim O'Neill suggested is, is looking at, at what point in the future has our, are our projections for declining pupil enrollment so that we could fit the sixth, seventh, and eighth in one building, close the other middle school, put the fifth graders back in the elementary schools? I mean, it just seems logical that if we continue to decline, that there is a, a point in time in the future, if the numbers continue this way, that we can say, this is when we can do this. I think that would be the least painful for the community. Because right now, you've got seventh and eighth at Curtis Corner, five and sixth over at Broad Rock. You're saying that bussing doesn't go down, but both of those schools are doing townwide. You're doing fifth and sixth townwide, you're doing seventh and eighth townwide. So bussing is all around and the high school. So the only time you reduce your transportation is if you stay with the neighborhood schools. I mean, all of these schools have the same issue of bussing townwide from fifth grade right to 12th grade.
I think conceptually, I would, I, I agree with what you just said, but the problem is. It, it, we, what we found in looking at this from 27 or 29 different ways was that what, what might be obvious to us in terms of, it must cost this, it must be a savings here, it must be a decline here, is largely dependent upon where the children live. And so, and how many bus runs you have, how many tiers of buses you have.
Okay, well, you know, I don't even want to get off on that if you, you know, but you mentioned that larger landmass and smaller, because you're putting them all in one school, but you're doing that right from the fifth grade on. Anyway, but let's move on from that, but I think there is a point in time where we can look into the future and say, this is the year we can close a building. And I'm not saying a community school, I'm saying put those fifth graders back in the elementary schools and close one of these middle schools. I mean, obviously Broad Rock is the nicer facility of the two. I don't know how many you can fit in Broad Rock, how many you can fit in Curtis Corner and, and how all that works into play, but we, I do recall during all those hearings, just closing a building alone, never mind the staff, was somewhere in the area of $250,000 of savings. I, I mean, I may be a little off, but I recall that that seemed to be the number.
Yeah, there are going to be.
So there are going to be savings.
Obviously, you're not heating to the same degree, you're not heating to the same degree. You're not, you know, using. not heating to the same degree, you're not, you know, using floor products, and I have, I mean, I have every center.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to give me the exact numbers now, but I mean, I do recall something from all of these hearings, and I do think that if we are headed in that direction, I don't, I don't want to see programs cut, I don't want to hear one word about arts being discontinued, or sports. I mean, if I hear that again, I'll probably snap. That is out of the question. So, if we have to pull in the reins, it's got to be a facility, if that's the way the population is moving. And I don't even want to see the teachers laid off. I mean, I'm not of that mentality. I think the teachers are probably completely stressed by all the changes between the new testing, the, what do you call that new program?
Teacher evaluation.
The teacher recommendations, the park assessment, now we're throwing in the new laptops to everybody. I mean, they don't get, they don't catch a break. They can't just go in their classroom and teach the way they were taught to teach. So, I mean, they've got to be the most stressed out of all of this. And I think we have to give them consideration. And let them do what they're, you know, what they were taught to do, and what they're best at doing is teaching their kids, the way they know how to do it best. But every, every other day, it's a new program, and I'm not saying it's your fault, it's coming down from, you know, RIDE and the commissioner, but I mean, it's very difficult. And then we have the problem with money. So, I don't want to cut programs, I want to keep everybody, you know, on track, I want to have the best school system we can have, but we have to look at the facilities, that's the only place we can turn. And we, like you say, we're not going to get any more money from the state. Hopefully, they'll consider the transportation costs as part of the educational funding formula, but how many times have we asked them for that? They just keep acting like it doesn't exist.
Because it meets the needs of almost everybody in the state, except for us and three other communities in the regionals. And so that's, we're sort of outvoted, is what we hear from the legislators, that it's, it's not something they're taking up, because it did what it was supposed to do for most communities and most school districts.
And we still get the group home aid, or do we not? Is that every year that is up in the air?
Right now, we're projecting the group home aid in our budget this year, but that is outside of the funding formula, so it's not guaranteed, but now, right now, we're projecting it.
Okay, thanks. Oh.
Kristin, I have a question. Mr. O'Neill's numbers are nearly a 25% decline in enrollment in 14 years. So I'll ask you if those numbers are accurate, I trust that they are.
I'm not prepared to give you an answer tonight on the numbers that he voiced, but I certainly will either ask him what the numbers again were, so I can copy them down, and we can, we can provide you exact numbers from our perspective and...
So do you have a feel for what the percentage is over the last 14 years? That's when...
We have it over, can you give us just a minute?
Sure.
And we'll give you what we have with us this evening. Now, I've often said, the advantage of having an office in this room is, you don't have to bring your entire office into this room, hopefully, but...
The numbers, Kristin, are on the board. To just take a look at Steve's program.
I think that Jim's numbers are accurate.
Right on the money.
Having been there at the beginning of the time that Jim is talking about.
Sure, thank you.
I think that that is reflective of the decline.
That chart shows 1987 through 2015. The red is your elementaries, the green is the middle school, or it used to be junior high, and the top is the, is the high school.
Right.
So you can see where the decline is. If you look at what NESDEC has predicted going forward, they're looking at where we are in 2015, that the decline through 2020 will be about 75 students per year.
That's, we can see roughly 63 to 75 a year.
So it's about, it's about that, Joe, in terms of what the predictions are. NESDEC's been very close, but when you go back and you look at those enrollments, you can see, you know, when you, when we got to our top year in 2001, you know, we were up at almost 4,300 kids, and you see how quickly the decline has occurred. And, you know, we talked about that, the first capital budget hearing, in terms of the demographic changes that we're seeing, as well as the reduction in family sizes that are occurring, and the type of housing that we're seeing, a graying of our population, and we're seeing a decline in ages 14 and below from the 2000 to 2010 census. So, there's nothing that we're seeing that would suggest that NESDEC's, you know, estimates going forward are something that are going to be an aberration. We think that they're relatively close, and some of the numbers in the previous years were before the pre-K. And with the pre-K being at 100 students, these numbers here look 100 students inflated to what you were seeing in the 80s.
Right, in comparison.
There's been a huge change in what that enrollment base has been, and you can see it will continue. As it continues, the number of students per grade class are going to be reduced, which then provides, if there was a utilization study looked at, greater flexibility in how you could redistribute population. But, you know, it's a case where you'd have to look at each of the grades to determine, you know, how many kids are in fifth grade that are going to sixth grade. When we looked at, you know, we keep the numbers, and, you know, you can see that, you know, in some of the earlier years, they were going up each and every year. As we got out into the 2015 and 14 year, we were seeing the grade sizes from second to third to fourth continue to decline.
Right.
So we'll see the smaller classes at the high school level, because at one point, the high school, you know, we were looking at, in the big year, 1,337 kids in the high school. And we're now down to a number, I think the numbers...
About 1,000, I think.
Yeah. So, I mean, you can see those changes. We've kept the chart as wide as it is, just simply because it's so demonstrative of the changes that have occurred over that term.
Sure. So, to Carol's point, with those future numbers especially, it should be fairly, I won't say easy, but easier to predict, maybe, when we should make a change.
Well, there's other changes that are going to occur that really aren't integrated here, would be whether or not there's going to be changes in the size of the charter schools. Kingston Hill has just gotten approval to be able to expand with their numbers, that could have some impact. Although we've seen a reduction in the number of charter school students over the last several years, that are, that are South Kingston students. But that could have some impact, either positive or negative. Most likely negative, if there's going to be enrollment expansions on those schools, or if we continue to see, you know, one of the other things that we saw was expansions in the parochial schools in the, in the early, late 1990s and 2000, that's when we saw some changes there. So, there's different things that have occurred, but this isn't South Kingston alone, this is really a societal issue that you're going to see in terms of reductions, and particularly the suburban rural areas are seeing reductions in their student population, not just us, it's global.
We're finding that there are only four or five communities in the state that are actually increasing enrollment, when Sockett, Providence, Pawtucket, Cranston, and Smithfield has been able to maintain some stability, but they haven't been providing gains. So every other district seems to be declining. The compacting, or the joining of the lower, the decline in resources, and then the decline in enrollment is devastating to our community. I think to just build on one piece that Carol said, Carol, you're right, we looked at about, we looked at 27 to 29 different options. And so now, if you're asking the school committee to consider just looking at one option, when can you implement that one option?
Yeah, and I'm not asking for actual specifics, but look at your, what are your predictions on student enrollment, and how could you, what year would you foresee that it would be possible? And what I'm saying is, put sixth, seventh, and eighth in one school, like we, like a middle school used to be. Put the fifth graders back in the elementary schools where their neighborhoods are. So, and when can we fit, when would it fit? When would the numbers fit, with the buildings and the capacities and...
I guess I hear the request a little differently, so let me just reflect back. What I hear is a very legitimate request of the school committee to look at the questions of enrollment and configuration, and to look at the options that are available, laying out the savings and consequences of those options, so that there is then a community conversation, as there was five or six years ago. I don't think that...
Well, I don't want to go back to looking at the neighborhood schools again, Scott. I mean, we beat that to death, and nobody wants that, you know, nobody, nobody was happy with that.
I would make the argument that we may end up in the same place, but a more comprehensive planning process is never the wrong answer. Rather than deciding ahead of time, there's only one option, and so the only question is, when are you going to do it? I think we ought to look to see whether there are options that we haven't settled on, and then we have a conversation about what's been identified. One of the variables is, when can those options be implemented?
Yes.
And I think that's a critical question, but I would hope that we can look at all of the options, as having been around at the time that the fifth grades moved, I vividly remember, I was on the losing end of that, I would relish a return to that vote, but I just think that there's an advantage for us to go back and look at as many options as possible. There are people who were not part of that conversation at the time that we did it.
I don't know, I think the community spoke pretty loud and clear that they want their neighborhood schools, and I really don't want to open that conversation up again. I think that would be a mistake.
Well, I think, honestly, we can, we can leave that as a discussion that's going to happen internally on the school committee, but I think the school committee probably understands basically what we're asking for at this point. And I'm glad you've started to put it together. As has been said, we're not looking for this information during this budget process, but if, once we get through this, maybe we can start talking about that study, at least for the middle schools. And that would be, that would be productive for the community. I think Mr. Daley-Labelle had something to say.
Well, I have a few things, but, you know, just on the transportation piece, you know, I do think we need to look at that. The transportation budget, prices of fuel were already up at that time, 2009, 2010, but at that time, it was 3.2 million. And at the year they were currently in, it's in the ballpark of 3.8 plus, and it's projected to be just under 4 million, I think, this next budget year. So I think that we really need to look at that. And so then, I do reflect back to the previous process, and I really want to look forward, okay? But I do reflect back that the conversation around how our schools are going to be configured, and, I mean, this is like a broken record, you know, because I don't know how many times I said this those years ago, maybe it sounds familiar. It was 12 to 14 week process, and then we had a year to implement it. And really, it should have been the other way around, we should have had a year process to look at all these different pieces. And, you know, so I really felt at that time, you know, we robbed the community of a full, honest conversation. And I think, I don't know that that's the reason for the transportation costs, but I do wonder, you know, I do wonder about that, and whether we, that was one piece that maybe truly did not get looked at. So I think we, I think I agree with President, where, you know, kind of get through this budget process, but then I do think it's important to establish a framework. And I think that the last time, the town council was really excluded from the process. So I think the school committee needs to do a much better job of having the town involved in the process. You know, we can get more into that, I don't need to go off on too much of a tangent there. And I just want to say that the current, the last budget year, we, I believe, if I'm looking at the documents correctly, we expended 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars less than we had planned for. And so at this point, our surplus, undesignated funds of 3 million dollars, which I think was talked about, you know, just touched on at the budget meeting in December. And so, you know, I'd like that to be part of the conversation. Do we want to be more aggressive tapping that to maybe have less cuts? I don't know if we need to replace some of the previous cuts or not, or be a little more kind to the taxpayer, because even in this current year, we are running with a surplus. So it's not like, you know, we don't want a structural deficit, I've heard that, you know, for 10 years, and I do understand the concept, but if we're going to take out 300 and we're putting in 400, well, that's not a structural deficit. A structural deficit would be if we take out 600, and we're going to put back in 400. But if we have a 3 million dollar surplus, at what point do we want to discuss that maybe we can see that number start to go down instead of continue to go up?
Any other comments, or?
If I have all my numbers, please correct me.
I think the, the problem I got with your numbers is that what we, you need to understand that you may have money that's in fund balance, but it's assigned fund balance. This chart that I'm putting up here, you had 3,185,000. I know you can't see that, let me see if I can make it a little bit brighter. You started out with 3,185,000, which is about 5% on your 13, 14 budget. You had an operating surplus, when you look at the unrestricted school fund, of 530,000. You had 714,000 that's committed to encumbrances for the year. You've got 400,000 that's committed to your 14, 15 year as a budget revenue. And you've got 903,000 for the capital improvements that you were committing to do outside of the bonds. So essentially, what you really have is about 1,685,000. Now, holding a portion of fund balance for unanticipated reductions in state aid or other problem areas are going to be important, but it's not a 3 million, Jonathan, that you really have. You're down closer to about less than 3% of what your operating budget. Tracking your budget now, from Mary Ann, is about a 450,000 surplus position for the 14, 15 year. On a 59 million budget, that's kind of close, your healthcare costs alone have skyrocketed during the month of December. So when you net out the fact that you don't have as much of a surplus in there that you had anticipated, that 450, maybe less. All I'm saying to you is, is that understand your numbers, rather than seeing those large numbers, because committed dollars versus unassigned dollars are two different things, okay?
Mr. O'Heaven.
I'd like to point out that I do think there are savings to be had in our transportation system. And where you, the town council, can assist us in that is writing letters of resolution to the legislators. Specifically, what I'm concerned with is, by law, we need a seat on each bus for each student, regardless of whether they use it or not. And it's, I think, fairly evident that there is a percentage of the families in this community that simply don't use the bus system. They, they're never going to use the bus system. But by law, we can't remove that from our transportation. So that's a real simple adjustment to the legislation that could reap savings for us. And I would, I would suggest that this could be a sound course of action, simply... And I would, I would suggest that this could be a sound course of action, simply because the new funding formula has removed transportation. So I sort of feel like they've brought up the issue. So if you're going to present us with a problem, I think it's reasonable to say, could you at least give us an option such that we can solve this problem? But to give us the problem and say, we're not going to help you out with a solution, I, I, I think we're missing an opportunity, not pushing on our legislators, uh, in that way. Uh, and I've brought up the issue of, of monitors also. There again, I think, since they've removed transportation from the funding formula, I think it's very reasonable and a very sound political position to go, you've brought up the subject, let's have this conversation, we are having budgetary issues, here's a way where you could help us be more efficient. Thank you.
Can I just ask, Keith, are, have you guys put a resolution together to that effect yet? Or are you planning on it?
Every year, we have put, the school committee, excuse me, has put forth a resolution in some avenue of the funding formula, and typically, that has been transportation. Last year's, um, uh, request was regarding, uh, transportation. And so, yes, every year.
And we usually sign on and we send a joint resolution.
You typically support, yeah.
But he's being a little more specific with his request at this time regarding transportation.
We have not written a resolution that is specific to the details that Mr. Voorhebent has, has, um...
So I'm sure this council will be more than happy to sign on to any resolution that you propose. Uh, I think you're suggesting that we propose the resolution, but we'd send it back to you to have your support. So, I mean, without your support, we both need each other's support, I think. That's the strongest message we can send.
So on, you know, on that issue, and that it really piggybacks with what Mr. O'Neill was saying, you know, do, well, how do we connect? You know, maybe we, we need to make sure we connect with our legislators for, that this can be heard specifically, or, you know, can, can it be heard specifically? That'd be great. If not, if it can just be a general budget hearing, that, you know, maybe there's a group of people, uh, that are, you know, some are, um, community members, school committee members, and staff, and town, you know, a couple of town council members and staff, that, you know, because that may go maybe to the point that the resolutions have gone up. It really doesn't seem like it's being heard, and maybe if we show up, it doesn't guarantee anything, but maybe that's the synergy.
Well, we typically have a meeting with the local legislators. I don't know when we plan on doing that this year, Steve, but certainly, this is a topic that should come up, uh, at that meeting. I don't think we've spoken about that yet, uh, as to when we do that.
Normally, uh, council does schedule the time, and so too does the school committee to meet with the local legislators. I think anything that's school related should be coming from the school department and being forwarded to the council with the appropriate research on it, so that you can review and endorse if, if appropriate. But normally, we don't meet with the legislators till we get, uh, further into the legislative session, so that we have a better understanding of what legislation's been introduced, or if we want to introduce legislation, it should be done earlier, so that, uh, they can, they can get it into, uh, into the committee system up there. But, I mean, I think that something's really important, too, is that if we're going to, uh, going to address something which only affects five communities, recognize that many of the communities that are on the receiving end of the education aid formula are suggesting that you're still getting far more than you're entitled to under the formula. That's a, a real reason why the transportation, uh, has fallen on, on deaf ears. That's not to say, don't continue to lobby for it, but understand that, uh, that there's, there's still a belief in 30 school districts that South Kingston has, uh, obtained more dollars than they're entitled to at the expense of their districts. And their legislators see it in that manner, because we've had this discussion upstate and, uh, it has not been a good reception.
I do think that Keith has a, a new twist on an old problem, which is the busing. Uh, if they have to have all these seats available for kids who are never taking the bus. And I understand, once in a while, somebody takes a bus when they usually don't take a bus, but, uh, there's got to be some way to make, make up that gap, because if you drive by, say, Broad Rock, I live on Broad Rock Road, and, I mean, they're lined up driving those kids in every morning. And, and I know that goes on in many schools. So if there were a way for parents to opt out of the bus, maybe that's something we should look at. We're not looking for more money from the state, but relieve us from some of the mandates that would ultimately save us money. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just listening to Keith that, and I think it, it has some merit.
I just wanted to make mention that we just recently met with the legislators and have determined, uh, typically, that meeting was in December. We found that we don't get a great turnout, um, at that time from the community, because they're busy, um, it's, it, preparing, uh, for holiday seasons and whatnot. So we changed it to November, uh, the first night of the newly elected, uh, committee, and had that sort of touching base time. Appointed Michelle Broussot as the legislative liaison, who would be called upon to work directly with folks. She's actually right now in the pipeline on a charter school, um, uh, piece with Teresa Tanzi and, and, and Jay O'Grady. And then we are planning, I think it's in March, a March work session with the legislators. Again, that's not something that we've typically done, but for just the reason that the manager stated, we found that things change in the legislative committees and with the bills being proposed, and the legislators need our support to be able to say if things have changed and to follow them through, and, and, and as Mr. Daily Label alluded to, testify. Um, and so it, we have a greater chance of being able to have a free schedule on that night if, if someone's really keeping an eye on just that focus.
Well, I just want to say, I am extremely happy to see that we do have one of our legislators here tonight who represents South Kingston. Um, and it, you know, she is newly going up to the State House, and, um, I'm just happy to see that she's here to support South Kingston and what we do as a, a local resident and somebody who is the voice of the people. So I, I think, and I, I'm sure she's heard everything that we've said tonight and taking it within context. Thank you.
Kathleen Fogarty. Um, I actually came tonight to, to hear the discussion. Um, I was up at the State House earlier. We ended early, so, um, I'm glad that I can make it here. Not being shy, uh, on just last Tuesday, as we were all waiting to walk up to the State House to be, um, sworn in, actually to see the governor sworn in, um, I was sitting down because my feet were killing me already, and, um, Deborah Gist was standing next to me. So I took the opportunity to start chatting with her and, um, talked about the transportation and funding. And so, uh, she said to me, well, why don't you come to my office and we'll go over the numbers? And so I'm here tonight to say, I think, that we have four legislators representing South Kingston, and I'm hoping to try to get the four of us together and maybe with you, Kristin, certainly, with the blessing of the school committee, um, go up and meet with her, and, um, let's go look at her numbers, and let's discuss how this has affected South Kingston. I talked about, um, you know, what really the makeup of this town is, and, um, I think that they have a, a bad perception of South Kingston as being a wealthy community, and that's certainly, um, not true. So, um, since I had that discussion with her, uh, I think that we should do that. So that's actually one of the things I was going to wait till the end to come and discuss with you. Another piece of legislation, Teresa Tanzi actually, um, put in front of me today, was talking about a freeze on the, um, funding formula. Um, I'm the second signee onto it. I, um, wholeheartedly support that. Um, we'll see who else signs onto it, because as Steve was just alluding to, when you go up there, everybody else thinks that their town is getting the short end of the stick. And, um, so, but I think it's, it, of course, of, you know, those other communities that are still declining, the, um, schools, the regional school systems, you know, really focusing on those reps up there. So, um, that's what we do, before session and after session. We'll be running around tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll get enough signatures on board, I think we will, um, to hand, well, to, for Teresa to hand in her, her legislative piece. I actually have it here, and just wanted everybody to kind of look over it if they wanted to see it. Um, again, I was happy to have the opportunity to come up here and, and, again, I was going to try to talk to one-on-one afterwards, but since you're talking about the things that we're talking about up there and trying to change, I figured I'd come up and add my two cents in, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Great. With that, we're adjourned.